You can keep mine the way it is. What was that?
Oh, no.
That you're the only one they need to know.
Yeah, right.
Good evening. It's 6:30 and we'll go ahead and get, uh, welcome everybody on the audience. It is 6:30 and we'll go ahead and get this regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May 20, 27, uh, 2025. Mari, could we do roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Álvaro Arriola.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem James DeRusse.
Here.
Councilman JP Sánchez.
Here.
Councilwoman Ernestina Martínez.
President.
Councilman Jesús López Jr.
President.
Councilman Randy Quinones.
Here.
Councilwoman Carmen Gutierrez.
President.
Mayor, you do have a quorum this evening.
At this time, can we stand for the pledge allegiance and allegiance to the Texas flag and remain standing from the invocation done by Pastor Mesa from Temple Jesús de Nazaret?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Can we repeat that?
Okay, let us, uh, let us give God thanks for, for the beautiful city of Del Rio, Texas, and we are going to pray to, uh, we ask God to grant us wisdom to keep our city of Del Rio, Texas, beautiful, safe, and ongoing. Let us pray in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come. Your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Let us not fall into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For you are since the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Blessing for us.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is citizens' comments, and there are none this evening. We are now on item number six. I'm gonna skip to D, E, and F, and then we'll come back to A, B, and C. Um, item D is mayor council public announcements.
I, as mayor, I don't have any comments or, Councilman DeRusse?
Just one thing. I want to appreciate, or say thanks. Appreciate everyone that came out to my town hall la- last week. Really good discussion. I got a bu- bunch of stuff to, uh, find more information on. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Gutierrez?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone who attended the, uh, recent public meeting on the noise ordinance. Your voice matters. Your voice counts. We heard things out there, and I hope, uh, those of you that were unable to make it in person, that you please, uh, go back and listen to that. We should be voting on that ordinance tonight. Also, I wanna thank, uh, the city of Del Rio, Vavertie County Veteran Service Officer, Mr. Enrique Trevino, for holding the beautiful, solemn occasion memorial da- day ceremony. Um, as we reflect on that day yesterday, let us remember the moms, the dads, the brothers and sisters of those fallen heroes, and also those that came back, and perhaps they did not sacrifice their life, you know, in the way that they, that they died, but that they came back with many illnesses and physical ailments, and we must continue to do as much as we can to help our veterans. Please keep those families in your prayers. Thank you.
Any, anybody else who does?
We are on item E, Purple Heart, Purple Heart City Proclamation.
What an honor for me, as the mayor of the city of Del Rio to do this, a Purple Heart City. Uh, if this is, uh, is Mr. Powell on the arms? Could you step up to the front, sir? Let me read this to you, sir. Whereas the city of Del Rio and the state of Texas has always supported its military veterans population, whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military declaration in present time. It was initially created as the badge of military merits by General George Washington in 1782. Whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or dedication made available to the common soldier and a special award to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America. Whereas the mission and military order of the Purple Heart is to foster for the environmental goodwill among the combat wounded veterans, members, and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most important, make sure we never forget. Whereas the city of Del Rio has a large veteran population, including Purple Heart recipients. Whereas Del Rio appreciates the sacrifice of our Purple Heart recipients made in defense of our freedoms and believe it's important that we acknowledge them for their courage, show them the honor and support they have earned. Now, therefore, I, Álvaro Arriola, the mayor of the city of Del Rio, do here pro- proclaim the city of Del Rio as the Purple Heart City.
Appreciate it. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, the, the city bridges us with love. Uh, we appreciate the community as well. Uh, thank y'all so much. Continue to bridge us with your support. Uh, so, so, oh, I apologize. Thank you. Uh, so our organization is building tiny little dockyards later. If you see them for veterans, uh, they're for homeless veterans. Uh, we, hopefully, June 20th, we'll do our grand opening. Y'all come out there, support us, and, uh, continue to support us in, uh, what we do, we may do.
Item F is city manager's informational update.
This evening, this evening, I have quite a long list, uh, so I will get started. Um, I would ask, um, uh, first to acknowledge Lieutenant Alfonso Zertucci, who has retired after 34 years of service. Is he here with us? Fantastic. Come on in.
This way. We want you centered off the seat. It does not say retired.
If I may begin, um, we have several others we would like to, um, acknowledge. We have had, uh, several promotions on May 13th of this year. Uh, Delbert Hill was promoted to Assistant Chief. If you are here, we'd love for you to join us in here. Uh, Delbert Hill, um, and then we have Armando Artiaga, who was promoted to Captain. And we have Mr. Sabino Torres, who was promoted to Lieutenant. And we have Robert Jimenez, who was also, um, promoted to engineer. And then finally, on the 25th of May, we had Ben Denny, who was promoted to Lieutenant as well. If we could have you up front for pictures.
Chief.
Then with our police department, we have also, um, we would like to honor Lieutenant Jeffrey Hardwick, if he is here. I don't know if he is, was able to join us. Jeffrey Hardwick. And then Sergeant Estevan Hernandez was promoted. He was promoted to sergeant. Jeffrey Hardwick was, um, promoted to lieutenant, and Alexis Ramos was prom- promoted to senior officer. Do we have any with us this evening? I thought they might be out in the hall, but please know that we would like to honor them, um, as they have just recently been promoted. In addition, um, we would like to say congratulations to Marisol Mendoza, Joey Tor- um, Toro, and Selena Mendoza for their, uh, receiving their bachelor's degrees. Are they here this evening? I see Marisol out here. Uh, we would like to congratulate them on such an accomplishment. Um, we also have, um, just a few more announcements. Uh, May 29th, we will have an, uh, at the Southern Depot, an open house and ribbon cutting, and we will be discussing that more in just a moment. Um, that would be at 3:30 that day. Um, on May 23rd, we just held the Older Americans Month Celebration, and it was well attended, and we appreciate all who participated in that. Again, we, um, have road, um, projects that we will be working on this summer, and those include Strickland and Griner. Those will be staging over the next week. Um, they wanted to wait until after school was out, but those are staging and getting ready to start. So Strickland and Griner are starting, and that's from Nicholson to Garfield and Garfield to Ogden. We also have the Keep Texas Gold Award this evening that Esme and Michael, um, have received. Uh, they received that in Austin, and I believe we're gonna be talking about that in a moment. Um, and I think we have covered all of our topics. Uh, we do have the presentation, um, of the Gold Star Affiliate for Keep Texas Beautiful. If you can come up and join us. Michael, if you're here, and Esme, if, if you don't mind joining us, we can take a picture.
Oh, is he? Did he just walk in?
Yeah. That's the one with the check. Before we, are you gonna do the next one, Esme?
I can, because I have two back-to-back, so whatever, however you'd like me to do that. Can, can we go ahead and, and do?
I'm gonna do which one?
Heritage. Okay, we can keep going with G. Uh, Ms. Burkhardt, did you have any more announcements?
Did I, did I miss a pile here?
Well, she's, Esme's gonna do these, right?
Those are from Esme. Okay.
But did you have any more announcements for?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right.
I, I, I need to ask you something.
Yes.
And this is something that maybe you can bring out to us on the next meeting. On La Soya Street, you talked about the other Griner and Strick, uh, uh, Strickland or Griner and?
Griner and Strickland.
Uh-huh. How about La Soya? Because I think, uh, I've been getting a lot of calls in regards to that one, and there's a concern there that we, we're gonna distract ourselves from the particular other streets and not finish La Soya. Do we have an idea, or can you bring it back to us on the next agenda?
Certainly.
You know, a completion date, because I think we already done all the infrastructure and everything in it.
Okay. I will bring that back to you.
Okay. All right. Mari, what's the next item?
And so, uh, we're continuing with item G. It's Keep Del Rio Beautiful Clean Recognition. Is that the one you wanna do? Okay. Keep Del Rio Beautiful Cleanup Recognition for Heritage Academy for participating in the Greatest American Cleanup Program.
Esme?
Good evening, Mayor Council, Esme Mesa, Community Services Director. So, in the audience here, you'll see a lot of students from Heritage Academy, and Heritage Academy has had a great partnership with the city of Del Rio for more than, uh, five years, beautifying and cleaning our creek. And so, um, we're really happy and excited to have a full house here and have their parents supporting them as well. We do appreciate, uh, the community service that the, uh, young community has here for the city of Del Rio. So here are some pictures of their cleanup. As you can see, some of them got in the creek, and part of Keep Texas Beautiful is keep our waterways clean. So we get supplies from Keep Texas Beautiful, which we're able to share with all our volunteers. And, um, there's another picture there by the creek, and, um, so those are all some great photos, and we'll be sending these to Keep Texas Beautiful at our end-of-year report so they could see all the different organizations that have helped to keep our community nice and clean. Next slide, please. And so, um, the Greatest American Cleanup from Keep Tex- Keep America Beautiful is celebrating their 250th, um, anniversary, and so it's Texans who want to clean and beautify their local communities, and this program runs from March 1st through May 31st. And next slide, please. And these are all our volunteers. We had 17 students volunteer and two teachers that were there as the sponsors. So we're gonna go ahead and read the names, and the mayor will present them with a certificate. We have Fernanda Aguilera. Alexa Favela. Abril Rivera. Miranda Valdez.
Miranda Valdez. Jessica Savala. Regina Moreno. Oscar Quintanilla. Angel Solis. Miranda Ortiz. Nicole Delgado. Mary Andreas. Victoria Salinas. Manuel Aguilar. Masari Garcia. Carlos David Fadnandez. And if we're missing that one, then I'll get it to her. Donovan Wallace. Gaston Velasco. Carolina Gonzalez. And Shayla Zuniga.
Make a double row or something. Item H is Keep Texas Beautiful Gold Designation 2025 Recognition in Austin, Texas.
So I'll tell you guys a little bit about the Gold Star. I know a lot of people do know about the Gold Star since we've been talking about it lately. But for those that don't know about the program, the Gold Star recognition highlights affiliates that go above and beyond in their efforts to improve the environment and the community. The criteria affiliates must demonstrate strong organizational aptitude, robust community support, and participate in programs like Beautify Texas Awards or Governor Achievement Awards. And so here is Michael and I at the Capitol with State Representative Eddie Morales and his wife Helen. And Michael is holding the award that we received with, or from Keep Texas Beautiful. Next slide, please. This was at the actual annual conference, and this is with the Board of Directors Jess Lawburn and Suzanne Coe. Next slide, please. And this was Michael and I at the Capitol. Next slide. And so to the left there, you'll see all the different programs that we participate in. Don't Mess With Texas Trash Off, Fall Sweep, we have that every fall, the Greatest American Cleanup, as y'all saw, Heritage Academy, and some other organizations also participate in that. And there is actually a Texas litter database. So after each cleanup, we submit how much litter was collected. Some of them is based on bags collected, some is weighed. And so there's different ways that that data is collected. And we have our Texas, our Keep Texas Waterways Clean, which I know the mayor holds dear to his heart. And so over here on the right side, we have some of the Marines that had volunteered and helped clean up our creek. And so then they're holding a sign with the Great American Cleanup there. Thank you all so much for your support.
In a, in a similar manner, I just want to take the opportunity to also recognize Michael. He received the President's Volunteer Service Award from the White House for his cleanup and pick up, picking up, or picking up trash in the parks. And we just want to acknowledge him. I believe this is maybe the eighth year, eighth year he's received this award.
Hi, Michael.
We are back on item A. Six A is Monthly Unaudited Financial Statement for April 2025.
This is Roxy, or Mr. Child.
This, this is the Monthly Unaudited Financial Statement for April, and it's for informational purposes. If anybody has any questions, then myself or Linda, who's also online, should be able to answer any questions for you.
Did everybody have, reviewed it? Any questions in regards to page six, seven, and eight? Any numbers that you want to, or any other lines that you want to? Ask Roxy, any questions? By that means there's no question, so we move on to the next one.
Item B is update on the Southern Transportation Depot Rehabilitation Project.
Uh, Mr. Menchaca.
Good evening, Council Mayor. My name is Luis Menchaca, I'm the purchasing agent for the City of Del Rio. Let me just pull up the presentation on the computer.
Mr. Menchaca?
Yes, sir. I know, but I want to look at it here too, sorry. I don't want to have to be doing this all the time, sorry. Okay. So we've been working for a while on the rehabilitation project for the Southern Transportation Depot. And I think right now, I was talking to staff, it's the perfect time to start referring to it as a historical name that it is being used, right? And that is the Doryo Southern Pacific Passenger Depot. So on the presentation, you'll see that we're using the name Doryo Southern Pacific Passenger Depot Rehabilitation Project Phase Two. So on the first slide, we're going to talk a little, a little bit, a little bit about an expert of what was submitted on the National Register of Historic Places Registration Form. We've been working with Able City on the historical designation. And so whenever they submitted that form, they included this following paragraph. The Doryo Southern Pacific Passenger Depot was completed in nineteen-twenty-nine as a replacement for an earlier wood combination depot constructed in eighteen-eighty-four. The building historically served as the gateway to the city and has remained a stop on the Sunset Limited Passenger Line almost continuously since the time of its construction. The railroad and the depot opened the region to economic growth and served troops arriving for service at Laughlin Air Base during World War II. For its past and ongoing importance to the development of the City of Del Rio and the surrounding region, the building is eligible to the National Register in the area of transportation at the local level. The building is an important and intact example of a county seat type depot. County seat depots were often constructed as substantial and high-style buildings dedicated to passenger service, and as in Del Rio, typically included a spacious passenger waiting area, used mail and package express services, and exterior waiting rooms. The building is the most significant example of the Spanish Mediterranean Revival style in Del Rio, a style popularized in Texas in the early twentieth century by architects like Cass Gilbert and his designs for the University of Texas at Austin. The building is eligible for the National Register under criteria and C architecture at the local level of significance. And at the bottom, you can see some of the old pictures of, of the building. As we showed before, right, on the next slide, you'll be able to see how deteriorated the windows and doors were. And so for example, on this, you'll be able to see a window, a door, and then some of the side panels, right? And on the next slide as well, you'll be able to see a couple of more pictures on the next slide. A couple of more pictures of the outside and then of the foyer. The foyer had cracks on the roof. All of that has been remediated as part of the rehabilitation project. On the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about, about the scope of work. The initial scope of work was the installation of twenty windows, seven door units, in strict accordance with shop drawings prepared by the Pella Window Company. Work began early, in early January 2025. I don't know if you remember, but late 2024, the City Council did approve a resolution for us to move forward with the contract, and it was awarded to Jesco. On the next slide, we'll be able to see for change order number one, right? Within two weeks of starting, Jesco realized most of the building was suffering from a termite infestation. Change order number one and the amount of thirty-three-thousand-five-hundred was approved for a termite treatment for the entire building. The scope of work covered with this change order had the contractor drill holes, inject chemicals, termite, termiteicide solution, and seal the holes to prevent underground termite infestation. And as you can see, does show some of the damage that the termites did to the building. So after that, we had two more change orders. Change order number two was issued for the purchase and installation of panic bars, locking mechanism, and flush security bolt hardware for seven doors for the amount of twelve thousand dollars. And then change order number three has been issued, was issued in the amount of ninety-one-thousand-four-hundred and included the installation of frosted tin insulation of two windows in the restrooms, painting the inside of the building, and the repair of the stucco on the outside of the building. All work in the original scope of work plus change orders one and two was completed by the end of March 2025, which was the deadline that we gave the vendor. And work for change order number three was completed by the end of April 2025 with a walkthrough held on April 2022, April twenty-two, 2025, with representatives of the City of Del Rio, Able City, and Jesco present. A couple of punch-through items were identified. All work has now been reviewed and invoices submitted for payment. On the next slide, you'll be able to see some of the windows already installed, complete, one-eighty from the way it looked. Whenever the windows were being designed, it, it, the intent was to keep that historical look and feel on them. Of course, they're no longer made out of wood, the way that they were made before, but they try to keep that, that old look that they had before to preserve the historical integrity of the building. And so then on the next one, you'll be able to see in the middle some of the, the doors, and a couple more of the windows, but then you'll also be able to see some of the facility maintenance staff. They removed some of the outside, all of the outside benches and painted them the same color of the trim of the windows and doors. Other areas that were worked on were, IT helped us with the cabling for the fiber. And then there was some other items, housekeeping items that were being reviewed by the facility maintenance team. So there was a lot of work, housekeeping items, right, that were still being worked on after the punch-through items were, were covered with Jesco. Let's see. And so I wanted to also offer historical designation update. The State of Texas has issued a recommendation to the National Park Service for final approval of the historical designation of the site and issuing of the plate stating the site is of historical significance. Able City subcontractor HRTC Services, who specializes in historic preservation, are working closely with the City of Del Rio on this process. Now, what they tell us is, as soon as the State of Texas issues a recommendation, most of the time, the National Park Service will approve it, right? So at this point, it's just waiting to be placed on the schedule for designation. So it's a really good sign. We're a couple of months down the road, right, to, to get that done. With that being said, I wanted to go ahead and offer, extend an invitation, if you can go on to the next slide. We're going to have ribbon cutting for the Doryo Southern Pacific Passenger Depot on May twenty-nine, 2025. That is this Thursday at three-thirty PM at one-hundred West Ogden Street, so that everybody can go out there and look at that rehabilitated building. And so we hope to see you there. And then finally, I wanted to acknowledge some of the vendors or some of our partners in this second phase. That would be the Texas Department of Transportation, who without their help, this wouldn't have been possible. Pella Windows for the design of the, of the windows, Able City for the project management, and Jesco for the actual construction. And then, of course, all the staff that has been involved in this. So that's our update on the Southern Depot Rehabilitation. I know it's been a long road, but now we're here. We got it completed, so thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Menchaca from the dice?
Good job, Mr. Menchaca. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Not, no, very good. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Item C is update on phase one of the Automated Meter, Metering Infrastructure Project Water Portion.
Mr. Menchaca?
Yes, sir. Let me pull it up on my computer.
A tag team between you and Roxy, or just you?
For now, just me. But if we have any questions that I can answer, Roxy will jump in, and so will Greg and Viviana. So AMI, right, is the Automated Metering Infrastructure Project. We've been on phase one for, for a while. Phase one would be the water portion, and phase two will be the gas portion, God willing. On the first stage, we wanted to talk about some of the key benefits of automated meter reading for Del Rio. The first one is enhanced accuracy. AMR ensures precise meter readings, reducing billing errors. Second one is efficiency and convenience. Eliminating manual readings leads to faster data collection and reduce operational costs. Third one would be real-time information. Access to real-time utility data empowers residents to make informed decisions. Fourth one is sustainability. AMR optimizes resource usage, reducing the city's carbon footprint. And fifth, quick issue resolution. Faster identification of irregularities means quicker issue resolution. That was part of a press release that was released whenever the, the project was kicked, kicked off, which was back in September. On the next page, I wanted to offer an update. As of right now, whenever we went ahead and started working on this, right, we assigned fifteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-four active accounts. Since then, we've been able to complete ninety-one-point-oh-six percent of the project. A total of fourteen-thousand-seventy-two meters have either been switched out or retrofitted. And that is, that is through a partnership that we have with Corin Maine, and their sub- and their subcontractor, Vapo. On the next page, we're going to talk a little bit about the timeline. December 15, 2020, a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to give notice and advertise a request for qualifications for advanced metering infrastructure for water and gas meters was approved by city council. So this is a project that has been ongoing since December 15, 2020. May 20, 2021, an ordinance authorizing to begin negotiations for an agreement with Corin Maine for an AMI system that provides for automatic reading of water meters and gas meters. Infrastructure for transmitting and receiving data, hardware, software, and training was approved. Then on February 14, 2022, after negotiations went back and forth between both companies, there was an agreement that was made, and an ordinance to approve and direct the city manager to award a contract in the amount of $7,472,158.43 to Corin Maine for automated meter infrastructure for the city of Doryo was approved. September 11, 2023, Vapo Solutions Meter System begins field work to change out or retrofit meters, starting off with the San Felipe area cycle. July 17, 2024, field services activities conducted by Pinnacle AM LLC were completed. The installation of Neptune R900V4 Gateway lines and antennas was completed. Basically, what that is, there was four antennas that were installed in specific areas of town. Those antennas will then be catching the information that the meters are putting out, and that is going to be feeding our utility billing system. So those antennas were installed in July 17, 2024. September 24, 2024, a resolution to direct the city manager to approve the procurement of additional services and supplies from Corin Maine LP in the amount of $159,180 for the Automated Metering Infrastructure Project. Project at that point was at 71%. December 12, 2024, modems, gateways installed and verified to be running. City of Doryo begins to receive reading for already converted meters in areas covered by the gateways. So the antennas that were installed in July needed a modem in order to be able to communicate. So the modem that provides connectivity for those gateways was installed in December 2024.
Hey, Mr. Munchak, on those antennas, what happens if they go out?
The antennas collect the data, and they're able to collect data for up to a week. So if for whatever reason they go out, we have a week before we're not able to collect the old data. But the way that meters work is, let's say you don't read it in two months, that usage is still going to be able to be collected. So if you're at one, and within a week, you're at 10, even if you don't read from one to 10, the next time that you read it, it'll read 10. So the data, even though you're not going to be able to collect it by hour or by day, it'll still be eventually collected.
But it won't like double, triple
No.
once it comes back up in the air?
No, because these are, the way that these meters work, it's a dial. So the dial basically would have to run twice. It's not possible, it's like a circle, right? And you can't somehow double back into the circle. You're just going to keep going.
All right. Greg?
Can we go back to the last?
So it's a simple process. So your meter is a device, Mayor Council, City Manager, Greg Velazquez, put it right. So the meter, right, is a propelled meter, or it's basically a census meter, Neptune meter, with some type of device that measures flow, high and low flow. So that continues to read. So even though it's not sending the signal, right, your meter is still collecting the data. So when it comes back online, so if it drops for a minute or two or an hour, your meter is still registering the consumption, because it's working off of flow. When it comes back online, if you stop at 10 and now it's 12, it's going to pick up at where it registered. So it's always continuing to register.
Any questions for Greg or?
We have one.
Yes, sir.
The last item.
Yes. On March 2025, work sees as inventory of meters runs low. A reconciliation of the existing inventory versus pending jobs shows there is a need to order additional meters. Total additional funding needed to finish the project is approximately $300,000. So today, we will need a little bit of direction from council. We have two options, right, steps moving forward for Phase One. Corin Maine have identified the need to purchase a total of 653 additional meters needed to finish the 9% remaining of Phase One. The cost for the purchase and installation of these items is $302,220.48. This includes approximately $240,000 in inventory and $62,000 for installation cost. Option number one, the remaining 9% of the project can be completed in-house throughout the next two years. The city would need to budget approximately $120,000 per fiscal year to purchase roughly 330 meters and install them with in-house personnel. This would place Phase One of the project to be completed approximately in May 2027. This would extend the initial 18-month timeline to 44 months for Phase One. Option two, the city can opt to fund the remaining portion of the project through fund balance. The city would need to issue an ordinance to approve the purchase of additional meters and the installation cost in the amount of $302,220.48. This would allow work to continue, and Phase One would be completed in approximately three months. The initial 18-month timeline would be extended to approximately 22 months.
I guess this is the question that Mrs. Burkhart asked for the council. Mr. DeRus, do you want to say something, sir?
How are we that short? I mean, we started off with, we know how many water accounts we have. We know how many meters we're going to need, and now we're $300,000 short of meters. How did that happen?
So there was a couple that were identified, right, that were not in the initial list. That's a really small amount. That's like around 30, 30 of them. And so that needs to be, since they are part of the system, those need to be installed, and those need to be brought into what we are moving towards. So those needed to be added. But then besides that, there was a couple that were damaged and were not able to be retrofitted, right? Whenever they were out there doing it, they were not able to be retrofitted. So that retrofit was not able to be placed, and they had to use one of the meters that was supposed to be for one of the, the 653 for those. But then there were also a couple of them that, whenever they visited the location, it was not what was in the system. So then those also took up one of those existing meters that we already had in inventory. So now, whenever there's a reconciliation, and now we need 653 of different sizes, but most of them are of one of the most regular sizes that we use. So that's where a little bit of the difference came in, right, that out of 15,653 are now needed.
Okay. So let's go back to what you said about they were damaged and couldn't be used. Were they damaged coming out of the box?
No, the ones that were installed on the floor.
Okay, so how were, and how many? How were those damaged and how many were damaged like that?
I don't have the specifics on that, but I can get that. Now, we're not talking about the ones, the new ones that were getting, coming out of the box. No, these were actually on the floor that were expected to be retrofitted. So we were expecting to be able to take the meter that was already on the floor and put a dial on them that was going to retrofit and make them to be able to be worked with as IMI system. But once we actually went out and tried to do it, the meter was damaged, so it had to be entirely replaced.
Okay. It just sounds like our planning process needs to be revisited because this is, this is pretty significant. Because also on September 24, 2024, we did a change order for $550,000. So now, this is, we're talking an extra $900,000 over what our original estimate was. That honestly is horrible planning process that, I mean, because we're, we're talking, what? 12, 15% above? And that's just based on how we didn't initially have the right? Because initially, by the way, this was not supposed to be almost $8 million. It was supposed to be like five or six. And then it went to 7.8, and now we're adding another $900,000 on top of that. This is like so many other projects in town where, oh, we're, it's going to cost this much, and by the time we're done, it's three times as much. Well, by that point, you're kind of screwed because we have to finish it. You know?
Me, me.
Spurcard?
As a suggestion, as we are all focused on fund balance, and this is solely an update, we will come back before you in the next few weeks for your action on this item. But I would recommend simply going with our in-house and doing it over the next two years in-house. That will be my recommendation, and that way it will hopefully cut down on some of the expense.
Are employees trained on that?
Yes, it's something that they do. Whenever they do new connections, they know how to install meters.
We still have to purchase the meters.
And a lot of the times even, meters have a certain shelf life, so they're already actively changing out meters in their day-to-day.
Mayor?
Hey.
Hold on. Councilman DeRus?
Mr. Munchak, what's the warranty on those things from the supplier?
I want to say, do you remember, Greg? Was it like 15 years? I believe it was 15 years.
And will they still honor that warranty if we do it in-house, if we do the installation?
Well, they, well, they will, the warranty is on the item, so it's not on the installation. So even if we were to buy them ourselves and install them, the warranty would still be on the item.
But even though, like, do we need to be properly trained to handle that device to?
Yeah, they are. It is something that we already handle. So like for new connections, they're using that same exact meter, and we have a warranty on those meters, and they're out there installing these same meters.
And then on your two options, the only thing I'm curious about is weighing out the, our in-house labor, you know, adding that up to see what it's actually going to cost us to do the install versus them doing it, to see what's cheaper. And then plus, we're taking our staff out of other projects. Just a thought.
Our water distribution, I believe it would be water distribution, and water distribution currently is ahead of our sewer
Right, on our infrastructure. They are ahead of wastewater and gas.
They would potentially have the time to do some of this work.
Yes, and in regards to the installation, we've already done installations. We've had to gone in and do installations on some of the meters that weren't being touched by the contractor, so we would go in there and do the installation. And a retrofit, what they're doing on the retrofit, just to give you some insight, is the dials was being removed, it's not the housing. The housing is intact. It's removing the dial, putting in the dial, and then that dial has the connector for your communication device. So we have experience in installing and removing meters. We do this day in and day out. So once we get that account of how many meters we need to change out and replace, we can either do the complete installation of removing the meter and coming in with a whole new device, or just doing the dial replacement.
Any other questions from the right up here?
Yes, no. So you said these have a 15-year warranty. We've been doing this for, what, a year and a half? Two years, putting them in, and we're already swapping them out? Because they're broke, they're bad?
No, no, no.
Well, he said we're already swapping some out. Did I misunderstand what you just said?
Yes. Basically, what we had is we had existing inventory. And that existing inventory had various different types of branding, right? So what was already existing was going to be retrofitted using the dial that he was explaining. Those that we tried to retrofit, there was a certain amount of them that were not able to be retrofitted because they were damaged.
I got all that, but then after you talked about that, when, just before Councilman Quinones asked this question, you said that we're already swapping these units out.
What I mean is, they're already, this is part of their daily function. So it's already something that they're already doing. That is what I was referring to. I wasn't saying the ones that we just installed were swapping them out. That is not, that was not my intention. What I meant is that it is something that they're already doing. So it's something that they already have experience in.
Okay. My apologies for misunderstanding.
Is that the last couple of questions from the right?
Turned out.
Oh, wait, wait.
If I may, Mayor?
Councilwoman Gutierrez, because she was the first one to.
My questions were going to be what Mr. Quinones says, but a little bit more specific on those 15 years. Does the clock start ticking when they're in the ground? Each individual one, since we already have, what, almost two years of some already being installed? So the clock's ticking on those, and the new ones, the clock won't start ticking until they are installed. Is that correct?
This is one thing I wanted to clarify is, you have a 15-year warranty, just on 15-year warranty on the device, okay? And it's just like when you go to Home Depot or whatnot, you buy a piece of equipment or a pressure washer, and you have an in-house warranty. Then you have the extended warranty. They're giving us a house warranty, right? So these are Neptune meters, correct? These are Neptune meters. Some of the meters that were out there, that were compatible, that were in the ground, could not, could not be retrofitted. However, even though you have a 15-year warranty, as per state requirement, a TCQ and AWWA, you have to do a meter change out every 10 years, depending on the accuracy of your meter test. So regardless of your 15 years, as a city, we have to start working on a program, which is called your meter change out program, and every city does that, and we're part of that. And we have to comply with that, because also when you apply for Texas Water and Land Board funding, that is one of the requirements. So it's not, it could be 15 years, but depending on the accuracy of the dial, the dial can be taken out and put a new dial, as long as your device is intact.
And the other question I have is, with our limited resources and labor, is this a realistic timeline to complete Phase One? To have the remaining 330 meters installed by?
I think two years is too long. We have good, we've got some great people out there, out in the field, that do this day in and day out, and I think we could get it knocked out sooner than that. Like we said earlier, we have infrastructure that we're ahead of. Water distribution is way ahead of wastewater and gas, so I think we can knock it out pretty soon. Yes, ma'am. Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
That is, Councilwoman Gutierrez?
One thing that I don't understand, I thought we were purchasing a whole new meter. And now you're saying that we're using existing, existing housing and putting new dials in it?
The ones that are compatible, so.
That, that, that's, it doesn't matter if it's compatible or not. I thought we were getting a whole new metered with a whole new housing. I thought that's what we were paying for.
Not, no, we always mentioned retrofitting. Retrofitting was always part of the question.
I don't recall that. That's why I asked that.
Okay.
And if we always mentioned it, we always mentioned it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Martinez?
I have a question. Yes, since you're not going to, like he mentioned, the whole meter, it won't have anything to do with a warranty in case something goes wrong? They will still cover it?
Yes, the retrofit, the retrofit dial has a warranty of its own, and the original meter has a warranty of its own. So each one would have its own warranty being handled, and one doesn't void the other.
And what about the original warranty? How many years is that?
So we, we had already started changing out some of these meters. So warranties on the meters is 10 years. On some meters, the sub-meters is 15 years. It just depends what they have on their inventory.
That it?
Fine, thank you.
Councilman Lopez, I'm sorry.
No, I have a simple question. Based on we're changing out meter, meter housing to plastic versus back then it was cast iron, we put your, you know, cover the meters? And I know you got that.
Talking about the meter boxes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
How many, how many have been reported? Have you, have you known of any kind of reports? Based where they're set, have they been run over by cars? And what is the weight limit if they get run over by cars?
Yeah, the, they shouldn't be in, they should be in our right of way, not in the streets. However, many have the custom of just, you know, parking on top of these, and they do break, and we do get calls, and we do replace them. Be nice to go back to cast iron, right? They could handle the weights. However, the, this plastic that we have now, I mean, yeah, they're going to get broken and cracked and whatnot. We do get calls all the time.
Now, those sensor meters, are they also part of the warranty as well? Because they're being accidentally or run over?
Yes, and those are pretty durable. However, if you do run over the meter box, right, and for, due to it being plastic, it will probably just cave in and fall into the meter housing. Then, of course, it gets reported, but it will pick up the signal, right? Now, they see that it doesn't pick up, then it will be reported.
By your knowledge, right now, have you had that right now?
What's that?
By your knowledge, have you known of any reports of replacing those particular?
I haven't received any. I, I haven't received, I don't know, Iviana is receiving the reports in regards to some broken devices or meter boxes, just, just a few. And they get reported to distribution, and distribution, in coordination with their department, will replace them.
Now, based on the damage, do you move them, or do you tell the customer, hey, don't put your car there no more?
I guess we could tell them not to put their car there no more, but I mean, of course, they should respect it, but, you know, not parking on top of them.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't know, I, I think when we started on this venture trying to change meters and everything was great, but I, I personally, as the mayor, I got a lot of complaints on the installers. And then our water employees had to go correct some of those things that they did out there.
Right.
So to me, I think option A, where we give y'all the leadway to go installed and check the whole inner, outer pipes, because I understood from the ones that were installed, they just installed it and left to the next project, and the next project. If something happened to me, you're all the ones that had to go correct that.
I would agree with you, and it happened at my house. Uh, yeah, there was no notification. Uh, you know, we had all kinds of, of complaints. Um, and I think that as a city, we know the process, we know what TCQ requires, we know that we need to notify the customers, we need to leave door hangers and whatnot, and that's a process that should be taking place, and it had been corrected, because I did bring it up to their attention, was it two years ago? I did bring it up to their attention, and they, they did address it. Uh, but yeah, those issues.
I still find that you guys were the ones that were correcting a lot of the inner things that they were doing, so I appreciate that, Greg.
Oh, yes, sir.
I, I think you, uh, I, I'm with, right now discussing option one and continuing with on the process of the long link and letting y'all operate it and fix it. Warranties, remember one thing that I, you know, in life, that everybody tells you you got a ten, fifteen warranties, is how you installed it, they're always going to tell you something in regards to get out of the warranty. We just got to be diligent out there, make sure that everything's operational. Uh, I do get a lot of complaints, some people say that their meters have been double red or triple red, or the, the deals is going higher than they're supposed to, they are consuming more water than they ever have. So I think that's something that you're doing an awesome job of, and trying to correct. We, I think we approved seven point two million dollars, thinking that that was going to be it for the whole city. But in seven or eight years that everybody's been here, we always have change orders. There's never been a project that never comes in with a change order. And it's not the mistake of the planner, it's, things happen out there.
Mayor, in reference to change orders and stuff, going back to what Mayor Portem de Ruse asked, you have the quantity, the number of billing customers, right? So you should know, other than a few every year that get onto our system, how many you would need? Because every billing customer is going to have the changeout, no? Is that not the case?
So, I, I, I would defer to Viviana, but I can answer some of that question. Is, you have so many active water accounts, okay? That database is produced through billing, right? Every customer that comes into the city and has an account, has an account with billing. So then, that data was produced and provided to the vendor. However, you have subdivisions that kept on developing within the city of Del Rio, and then you had out development in the ETJ. So some of those were captured and had an account, however, they were not part, or accounted for, for the retrofit.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how we could be so much off.
I'm not going to disagree, but if any issue.
So you're saying that, that they were, there was continued development, which should have, we should know about, right?
Right.
Because one of the things that we're talking about right now is with new developments that are requesting access to our water and sewer system, is this development has eighteen connections, and this one has twenty-two. So we know exactly how many there are, so I don't see how we could be six hundred and sixty off. That, that tells me, and I'm not trying to throw anyone specific under the bus, but somewhere in our planning process, we, we messed up, because we shouldn't be doing this this late in this process. Because as your timeline showed, we've been talking about this for about five years.
And that's not including those, Councilman DeRusse, that were not compatible for retrofit. So when you include those into the unaccounted, and for those that were still out in the ETJ and the development, so then therefore that accumulated to the amount of meters that need, the continued amount.
So I go back to my comment about the planning process, because shouldn't we not have had at least an idea on these meters are going to be compatible, these ones are not, so we have to do something different? Because again, we've been talking about this for five years.
If I may address council, all I can say is when prior consideration was taken on adding ETJ developments into our water system, they did not take that into account.
So we're here.
We're here.
This is for information, right? I think, did everybody let out their concerns and comments?
Yes, sir.
Not? Go ahead, the next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg and Mr. Menchaca.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we are now on items for discussion and consideration and possible action. Item seven is request authoriz-
I think we want to move item eleven A. After seven, or?
After.
Okay, all right.
So item seven is request authorization for Mayor Alvaro Arriola to travel to Mexico City to attend and present at the biannual Bridge and Border Crossing Group meeting on June tenth, 2025. It's bi-national, I'm sorry.
This is a bi-national, bi-national conference of the State Department, where all the mayors and the engineers of every city that is applying for presidential permit will present in Mexico City. This is also going to include CBP, all of our national delegates from different agencies, and also those delegates from Mexico as well. And so all of that will be presented on the tenth. And I just wanted to give a, a scope and understanding of what this travel includes.
Uh, do I have a motion on the dais?
Motion.
Councilwoman Martinez, second by Councilman Lopez. Do you have a question, concerns? Not, all in favor? Abstain.
Okay, so we are going to move item eleven A.
Eleven A.
Up, and that is Ornance 2025 dash zero three nine. And Ornance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve supplemental agreement number three for a hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars from RRP Consulting Engineers LLC for the second international bridge project.
I believe we have Mike, Michael Rios, that we will bring in on Teams video in just a moment to present.
Do y'all want to hear the presentation before we proceed on any? Go ahead, Michael.
Hello, good afternoon.
Can you turn up the volume on the city side?
Can you hear me, okay there?
You can begin.
Thank you, everybody. Good afternoon, Mayor, House members. I have a presentation, can, first of all, can y'all see the presentation, okay there?
Yes.
Yes.
Take it. I have difficulty. I'm sure everybody know, understand that the Rio Acuna International Bridge Project consists of building a new international bridge over the real ground between Ciudad Acuna and Coahuila. And, and the, the real, the purpose of the project to reduce traffic congestion, improve traffic mobility and safety of a Ford project, a Ford, for opportunity for economic growth, constructing a new international bridge for commercial and private vehicles. The needs to promote economic growth, commercial development, in Del Rio and providing alternate crossing, removing truck traffic through downtown Del Rio and Ciudad Acuna. Uh, the project will connect to the ports of plane, which is the future Interstate twenty-seven. It also connects to the Texas Highway Freight Network. And currently, the freight network travels through Del Rio, and all the roads in purple are considered part of the Texas freight network. But constructing a new project will be able to remove some of the truck traffic from the freight network and keep it on the loop from the outside of the, through Del Rio. Uh, what that'll do, but removing truck traffic from outside of the real, looking at decreasing truck-related accidents. Basically, truck-related accidents increased by ninety-two percent from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three. Currently, we're doing our studies for the presidential permit, doing investment grade toll revenue studies. Some reports, all the studies associated with the president's permits. Uh, one of the items they have is, we have to do a public involvement with all the NIPF process. We've had several public meetings on the project, and one of the things we found out in the public meeting, the people are not aware as far as the need, purpose, need for the project. So that's what this supplemental is for, for public outreach enhancement, to help to, to get the word on the project. With that, I have Joaquin Guerra here from Conexión, which is going to be proposing this part of the work.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Joaquin Guerra. Uh, I'm a partner in the public engagement firm, Conexión Public Engagement. Um, and as Michael laid out here, this supplement essentially would go towards paying for our firm to work with Michael's firm to do uh, public engagement on behalf of this project, to make sure that there is awareness of this new construction of, for the bridge, awareness around the proposed routes. Uh, we would also be doing, conducting, um, doing some research and polling to get a better understanding of what the public sentiment is, what concerns exist out there, so that we could use that information to essentially answer questions. Part of this also would go towards digital advertising to increase awareness, uh, and then taking the findings from the poll and, and, and public commentary to essentially put together long-form videos that do public education in both English and Spanish uh, for the residents of, of Del Rio. Yeah, so that's essentially, you know, our scope. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions about these, if you have any questions.
And then what?
The twenty-five.
Will it all type?
I'm sorry.
Will it all type into our schedules, commit activities? We could continue working with the Mexican engineers, complete studies, continue coordination, uh, continue according to the Mexican officials. We'll be presenting at the bi-national Bridges and Borders Crossing Group meetings, uh, as Ms. Burkhard checked, the next one's here on June tenth. Be completing our field investigation for environmental study, and then conduct a public hearing, that's why it's important that we get Conexión on early, so they can do all the upfront work for that public, to get the public aware of the project and the purpose and need and the benefits of the project. We're looking at submitting our environmental documents in August of twenty twenty-five, and submit, uh, print program in twenty twenty-five, and look at the president's permit to submit them in October. And, Burkhard, that's all I have, and like I said, we're big questions if necessary.
Hold on, Michael, uh, Ms. Burkhard has a comment.
If you'll remember, just recently, the city council, as well as the bridge board, approved the use of twenty-five thousand dollars. That would not be utilized if you were to choose this direction. Uh, the twenty-five thousand was simply a video, but it certainly wasn't to this development. It certainly wasn't anticipated for this scope of work. And so I would say our evaluation on the front end, at least from city staff's point of view, is probably meager as compared to this full-blown scope that has been presented, and, and seems like the right direction to go. In the bridge fund.
From the bridge?
From the bridge fund, and there is a breakout in your packet, I believe, eleven A. Um, you, um, if I can find it. Maybe it's not in here. Eleven A, yeah, there it is, eleven A. And you shall, or you can see the breakout of their services rendered on page.
Oh, one C.
Uh, one sixty, and one sixty-one.
Any questions from the dais for Mrs. Burkhard, or Michael, or Mr. Peña, I believe?
Guerra.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Yes, uh, could you put your schedule back up? The one that has the dates, your timeline? Please?
Here it is.
That one, okay. So I'm just concerned about putting the cart before the horse. If this gets approved, when would, it seems like things would be starting to move, but yet, as far as I understand, we have not determined or decided on a, on a route yet. So how would we be creating public awareness and conduct a public hearing? Especially in August, if we don't have that down yet?
The, I can answer that. Um, I believe the answer is that this is not regarding the route that you would choose, but the need for the bridge. And, and simply that is, it is evaluating the concept and the evaluation of the need for the bridge, rather than a route per se.
Well, I, I believe I saw rec, just in this presentation, that you would be conducting polls, surveys with the public. So that's going to be the number one question. Where is this going to be to see if they're going to support it or not support it? And even our other government entities, Valverde County and others, want to know where is it going to be so that they can know if they're going to support it or not? And, and I think, I thank you for that, Ms. Burkhard, for clarifying that this is just going to be uh, for the need to have a second international bridge. And I've, I've, and I do want to go on record that I fully support the need to have a second international bridge. We cannot have only one bridge and something happened to it, man-made or a natural disaster, and then we will be completely cut off. We must start the process of getting a second international bridge because it will take years to come to fruition, and we need to start now. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Councilman DeRusse, Mayor Portem?
Yeah, so this whole thing confuses me, and, you know, I reached out to the city manager when I saw this item on the agenda, because I had no idea where it came from. Because as she said, on March eleventh, we, the council authorized twenty-five thousand dollars for city staff to do a marketing campaign, and I expressed my concerns and displeasure at that point. And I find this one even worse, because not only is it four times as much, but the information in here tells you what they're going to do, because under paragraph one, where it talks about, you know, the questions, this is page one fifty-eight of the agenda packet, as the councilwoman said, it doesn't ask the important questions, right? Because the first question is, and granted, this is only a sample, do you support the bridge to boost trade and ease congestion? That's a loaded question, if I've ever heard one. Who's going to say no to that one? Right, but it's not asking about the two main things. One, why do you disagree that we need a second bridge at all? Right, because there are those people that do that. But more importantly, and we have some of the people sitting in the back here, who are opposed not for the bridge, but for the location. And this does not talk anything about the location. On page one fifty-nine, it basically is threatening public officials with we're going to do a marketing campaign paid for by the city to get you not re-elected, because you have the audacity to not fully agree with the current plan. As I've said many times, I'm not against a bridge. As I've said many times, I'm not against a bridge. Maybe we go to the north, but we have not done proper due diligence because things have changed. This has been going on for, you know, the idea 15, 20 years. The memo, the MOU on the location, over a decade ago, a lot has changed on the north side of town. Maybe when we do proper due diligence, we go, yes, the north side is still the same. But I still don't think this is the way to go about it because we're using city funds to tell people that they don't know what's going on. And like I said, the outcome, the idea of what this campaign is going to be telling people is already in here. So these questions don't matter on 158, based on what is on page 159. It does not matter because you already know where you're going to go. You've told us what you're going to say. That's all I have.
Michael, you have any response, or Mr. Peña?
You want, about the sample questions?
Well, the sample questions are, you know, intended to give an idea of what kind of questions that we could ask to measure public sentiment, you know? So I think that we would want to also take feedback from members of the council to make sure that we are asking the right questions as well. What you see in the proposal is not the full questionnaire. These are just sample questions to give an idea of what kind of questions we would ask in order to have a better understanding of, like, public sentiment and what questions, what information and the level of awareness that people have around the construction of the second bridge.
So I understand, as I said, they are only sample questions. But again, on page 159, you've already said what your outcome is, regardless, basically, of what questions you ask and what answers you give. You are saying you are going to do this. You are going to, you know, make inaction a political cost. Show officials that blocking progress could mean losing votes. You're basically saying, like I said, you're going to use city funds to basically get people either not elected at all or not reelected. You've already made that decision versus actually asking questions and then based on those questions, trying to decide what to do and which way to go. You're already saying what you need or what you plan on doing.
Do you like page 158 to ask the questions and come back to?
One, because it's, like I said, using city funds to tell, you know, citizens, you don't know what you're talking about, so no, probably not. But two, if we actually had questions and had reassurance that the follow-up to those questions was going to be an honest discussion? I mean, we've had how many public meetings, right? He said, oh, well, we need to, you know, get feedback from city council members to know kind of what questions to ask. Well, they know what questions I think needs to be asked because we were in the conference room a couple months ago, and I told them exactly what people are saying and the concerns that I had, which are just what I echoed. So if RRP doesn't know where people are, their perspective, their mentality, their concerns about this bridge, they have not been paying attention for the past couple of years. Like I said, every single one of these public meetings that we've had, they have gotten a lot of feedback, a lot of negative feedback based on the routes, a lot of concerns. And every time it comes up, honestly, I find this council on this topic so hard over. They, you guys are just stuck. You're not willing to even ask the question. Have things changed? How have things changed? Does that make a difference? Because like I said, maybe going back to the north or staying at the north route is the right way to go when you weigh all the different factors. But we have not done proper due diligence on the changes that have occurred over the past decade plus.
I guess my million-dollar question to you, Mr. Councilman DeRus. How long have you been at this and this thing has been presented to you? How many years?
I've been on the council seven years. What are you getting at, Al?
No, I'm just asking, how many times has this been presented? How many times have we educated our citizens in regards to the second international-
I don't know how many public meetings we've had. Multiple, I know that. I've been at the Civic Center multiple times for public meetings. And like I said, there's been a lot of concerns and feedbacks presented.
So your problem is page 159? Or the questions that they were protesting on 158? Or your concerns are those that they got to come back to?
Okay, I guess I'll start over.
Go ahead.
These sample questions on 158.
Sample questions.
The sample questions, as I said, they are only sample questions. However, you can tell, based on the chosen sample questions, you can tell where they are trying to go. Based off of page 159, you know where they're going because that is what they are telling us they're going to do. In addition to the whole how this came about as a change order that they are submitting to us versus us actually putting out an RFP for a full-on marketing program? Because I don't know if that would have been approved, right? Because, like I said, March 11th, $25,000. Oh, city staff's going to do this great marketing stuff. And now, over $80,000 more?
Can you answer that, Mr. Burkhart? Because I guess you all went out and found out if you could do it in-house also?
The $25,000 was an estimate that I came up with on my own. It had nothing to do with RRP, but simply was an, I guess, a guesstimate of what it would cost to do some kind of advertising outside of public meetings.
Okay.
Beyond public meetings.
So where did this idea come from to have us pay over $100,000 to RRP to do this?
This came from a discussion with RRP where they vetted the whole scope of what they saw needed to be done. And they've worked with this group in the past on several similar projects, and they thought they would be a good thing to look at. So I said, certainly, but we need to present it to council, and that's what we're doing this evening. If my estimation was far off, and it obviously was, that's on me. But certainly, they believe this scope is better suited for this project.
Any other questions?
Not for right now.
Anybody from the left side, any questions, concerns?
I got one. I mean, to me, it sounds just like marketing, right? That they're going to do for us? I mean, I think that we have a great marketing department. Why don't we try to do it in-house first? I mean, unless they did it for the same price, I mean, it sounds like the same job to me.
I believe that this, and I believe Conexión is still online. This includes a lot of online work that's not just posting on Facebook, but online actual surveys, data, getting that information back from the public and constantly having that communication going to try to develop what it is that they understand, what it is that they desire, and what it is that we need to share with our media as we begin to develop this process. Because this isn't just a one-year process. Obviously, this is a communication process that we haven't done as well as we should have in the first 10 years of this project, and something we're only starting now.
What I hear is from everybody's concerns. I know we can probably table this till we can discuss it a little further or have something else come up. Would you all mind doing that, or do you want to make a motion on it, or?
Mayor, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
So Conexión Public Engagement, is that a subcontractor to RRP?
Yes, it would be.
And so going back to Mayor Protem's question about why couldn't we do an RFP?
We certainly can do an RFP, if you would like to do that.
It might come in less. It tells you here, well, it details research, video production, digital advertising, and project management. The low is $56,000 and the high $88,000. But yet, we're being asked to approve $107,000?
That's correct.
So where's the difference?
It is simply in the amount of production that will be online, being produced, and consistently being pushed by Conexión out to the public.
But they quote $88,000 as the high.
That's correct. If you look on, if you look on page 162, I believe it is, you'll see that there is project management done by RRP.
Well, I've already stated, I don't believe we're ready for, to kick off this campaign. I think it's too early. We have too many questions still to be answered.
Can table it till she can come back and give you the proposal console? You do it locally, or you can go back to the RRP's?
I can do either one.
You want to postpone it or table it? Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to deny item 11A.
Do I have a second?
To deny.
To deny.
To deny?
Deny.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, this is to postpone it?
No.
To deny.
To deny.
Table it?
Reject it.
Reject it? Okay. We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, next item.
Okay, we are coming back to item eight. So item eight is the appointment of the interim finance director to calculate the no-new revenue and voter approval tax rate.
Mr. Chavez? Who's? Oh, Roxy.
Good evening, council and Mayor Roxy Soto, Assistant Finance Director. This is part of the annual procedure of our budgeting process. And it is the appointment of the interim finance director, Ms. Linda Coons, to be designated by the city council to calculate the no-new revenue rate and the voter approval rate for the city of Del Rio. We are just requesting that the city council approve this appointment so that she can begin calculating the tax rates.
Do I have a motion to dais? Councilwoman Gutierrez, do I have a second? Councilman Lopez, do I have any questions concerned? Not all in favor? Aye.
The next item is number nine, approval of meeting minutes, May 13th special and May 13th regular meeting minutes.
I hope everybody got to read those, and I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve both as written.
Thank you, sir. Councilman DeRus, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Martinez, any concerns or questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. And one abstain?
Okay, we are resolutions. Item 10A is Resolution 2025-093, a resolution of the city council of the city of Del Rio, Texas, providing and ratifying the appointment of a city fire marshal and providing for an effective date.
Do I have a motion to dais?
Motion.
Second.
JP, second, Councilwoman Martinez, any questions from the dais? Oh, the name?
He's here.
What's the name on this?
De Luna.
José De Luna.
José De Luna?
Yes.
Oh, he's here. That's him, De Luna.
There we go.
Okay, you want to make the motion with the name, sir?
Yes, I make a motion to, for the appointment of Deputy Chief José De Luna as fire marshal for the city of Del Rio. Congratulations, sir.
Welcome to the headaches, buddy. Any questions concerned? Not all in favor?
Aye. Let's put some fires out.
Item B is Resolution 2025-086, a resolution by the city council of the city of Del Rio, Texas, to adopt the 2025 City of Del Rio Water Meter Plan and providing for an effective date.
Before I ask for a motion, Councilman DeRus, do you have any concerns, questions in regards to master water meter?
Well, now that I actually had a suitable amount of time to actually read them, no.
Awesome. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt the city master water plant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Martinez, any questions, concerns? Not all in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is the effective date? I'm looking at the Resolution 2025-086.
Chavez?
Is it on there? Did I miss it?
I think he's, I think she's talking about the fire marshal one.
Did I miss it?
It does say provide for an effective date, and I didn't see an effective date in there either, so I assumed it would be tomorrow.
On the other one, it does say for an effective date.
First thing tomorrow morning, Joey.
Oh, actually, it's tonight, buddy. You're working.
You're talking about?
You have effective date, Mr. Chavez?
It's supposed to provide for the effective date. So on this one, on ordinance 86, it is, this resolution shall be enforced and effective from and after its final passage, and it is so ordained, so it would be effective the 27th.
Today.
Effective the 27th.
Got a first and a second? Any other questions concerned? I think we're all voted aye.
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 Okay, item C is Resolution 2025-087, a resolution by the city council of the city of Del Rio, Texas, adopting the wastewater planning actions prepared for the city of Del Rio and providing for an effective date.
Do I have a motion to dais?
I shall move.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman JP, any questions, concerns, comments? Not all in favor?
Aye. We're all overdue.
Item D is Resolution 2025-088, a resolution by the city council of the city of Del Rio, Texas, to consider and adopt a master watershed study incorporating update, updated findings and recommendations of ICE and establishing an effective date.
Do I have a motion to dais?
I shall move.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Martinez, any questions, concerns from the dais? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Item E is Resolution 2025-091, a resolution by the city council of the city of Del Rio, Texas, adopting the 2025 City of Del Rio Design Manual for the storm drainage facilities and making a manual, making the manual a requirement of the city of Del Rio's construction standards as defined in Chapter 26, 26 subdivision, Article 1, subdivisions Regulations, Section 26-7 definitions and providing for an effective date.
Do I have a motion to dais?
Motion to adopt the design manual.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, do we have any questions for the dais? Greg is here, can I ask? No, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Item F is Resolution 2025-095, a resolution to authorize and direct the city manager to reject all proposals received for the investment advisory services for all city of Del Rio funds.
Do I have a motion to dais?
Motion to reject all proposals received.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, do we have any questions, concerns?
A question.
Question, Mr. Councilman Lopez?
Who are the committee consisting of key staff members using the evaluation criteria? Yes, because this is here.
The committee consisted of the city manager, assistant city manager, interim finance director, assistant finance director, and the purchasing agent. That's five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilman Lopez?
No, sir, that's it.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Item G is Resolution 2025-099, a resolution by the city council of the city of Del Rio, Texas, authorizing and directing the city manager, Shawna Burkhart, to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement between AEP Texas Central Company and the city of Del Rio for electrical distribution service at the city of Del Rio International Airport.
Do I have a motion to dais?
Motion.
Councilwoman Martinez, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Lopez, any questions from the dais? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Item H is Resolution 2025-096, a resolution to authorize and direct the city manager to approve work order authorization number one in the amount of $241,965 from Humanus Engineering Solutions, LLC, DBA International Consulting Engineers for professional engineering services for the East Springs Containment Wall Project.
Do I have a motion to dais?
Motion to direct the city manager.
JP, Councilwoman Martinez, do we have any questions, concerns from the dais? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 10I is being pulled for corrections. Item J is listed as a resolution, but should be an ordinance, so I will read it as- Item J is listed as a resolution but should be an ordinance, so I will read it as an ordinance. It is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four zero, in ordinance, in accordance with state law and local laws, providing for the approval of a final plat for all tracks A and B being part of survey number one eighty-four, Sostines Corosco into lots one through four, block one, Amistad Acres subdivision.
Do I have a motion to die?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman DeRusse, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Lopez, do we have any?
Janice got a question for you.
Greg, yeah. Oh, Janice.
Hello, ladies.
I don't know.
Janice?
You guys can decide once I ask my question.
Okay.
Who is the best person? Uh, so. I don't have a question directly on the replating, understand the, you know, legal requirements and all that. But, um, the title says that this is the Amistad Acres subdivision. And so I'm not sure if Ms. Burkhardt forwarded you my question about that. So subdivision a lot of times is used with the connotation that there's housing involved, which clearly, when this was, you know, rezoned last summer to C two A would not be eligible. So if there, does the owner calling it their Amistad Acres subdivision have any bearing on that? Or is it just more of a colloquial term that doesn't matter?
Hello, good evening, Janice Pokret, planning and zoning director. Uh, yes, sir, that's a great question. Um, it is kind of confusing. But every, every property in the city of Del Rio has a subdivision name. And so a lot of times when commercial developers come in, they want to name it after their commercial development is coming in. It's confusing at the appraisal district because you have, uh, you don't have a track record for, for the different subdivisions. And so we would like to keep the subdivision name as the, the subdivision that was, that was started there. And so that's why this is not renamed with that commercial subdivision name. And, and also, um, for clarification to you, in, in our commercial zoning district, you can have a residential subdivision as well.
I did not see housing as a permitted on the, uh, city website. I, unfortunately, my iPad battery died, so I can't pull it up. But I did look at that and if I looked at the correct column, housing was not allowed in C two A, which is what it was rezoned at last June.
Okay, I'll review if it has been changed since I left.
Okay.
Before, the only zoning ordinance that would not allow for, um, residential was the industrial zoning district.
Okay. So please, if, if you could confirm that. And, and then I also have a question about, they want to extend First Street, right? And then donate that to the city. So currently, that's basically a driveway and we are not, you know, responsible for maintenance of that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Um, good evening, city council, mayor, Ivan Garcia, city planner. Um, it currently is a private access to the housing authority, rotary housing, I'm sorry. Um, but in this plat, the developer, um, they will be constructing First Street, bringing it up to city standards and they will be dedicating it to the city.
Okay, and that, that was part of my concern was, because basically it's going to be a, you know, city street, but basically, you know, for all intents and purposes, it's still gonna be a driveway leading into the gas station and the Rotary Village. Well.
Well, the Rotary.
That, that's basically the only places that it's going to lead for, for that half to, you know, block is, is to the proposed gas station and to the Rotary Village and entrance. I mean.
It seems like that and, and I wouldn't disagree.
For, for all intents and purposes, that is what it's there for. And so we need to make sure because if they're gonna have a lot of vehicles potentially, a lot of heavy, you know, gas trucks, it needs to, you know, if we're gonna then be responsible for upkeep, it needs to be built up appropriately.
So there is a.
That's my concern.
Alternate driveway, driveways, sorry, um, being built, um, by the Rotary Housing Authority adjacent to that.
I saw that.
And it's going to be blocked off on that First Street, so therefore there will not be any entrance or any, uh, vehicle or traffic from Rotary to that East First Street. That would be solely for, so they're gonna have an A cell, I'm sorry, a D cell coming in to.
Yeah.
Right? And then exit.
So let me rephrase what I said. It's basically that portion of East First Street is solely going to be, for all intents and purposes, a driveway to the gas station.
Correct.
I did not realize that the Rotary, uh.
That is correct.
Was going to be blocked off.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay. So again, my, my concern is that if, if we decide to accept it, that we make sure that it is fully compliant for that heavy vehicle traffic that's gonna be on there.
That is correct. Yes, sir. That's been noted also in their plans.
That's all I have.
I just wanted to, uh, mention to, um, Councilman DeRusse's question. Um, it will also provide access to the, to the lots in the rear, which is lot three and lot one.
Lot, lot two and one?
Lot, um.
Lot three and one.
Lot three and lot one.
In the back.
So initially, this, um, plat will be creating, um, four lots.
Uh, yes, Greg, by the time you finish the street, you're gonna go and Roger and inspect it and make sure everything's all right?
So we looked at the, at the design in regards to the construction of the street and we made some recommendations based off of text obfuscations for, um, heavy, uh, traffic such as semis and whatnot that deliver, uh, produce and also your, uh, fuel to that, uh, station that would be coming into Del Rio. So therefore, yes, the recommendations made and they have been noted in their design plans.
Any other questions concerned?
Mayor, concern?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Mr. Velazquez, um, at the preliminary plat review, and I only approved it pending the engineer's approval on how the traffic flow was gonna be. Because at that particular intersection, I noted that with the Coca-Cola, that high fence and some type of material that they used, you can't even see through there if, if you're gonna go to the right or the left. You actually have to be a little further out. And so I'm very concerned as to, um, what arrangements have been made? What discussions have you had as to trying to control that traffic? So that, um, vehicles and even then, you know, it's such a congested area. How is the tank trailer truck going to be turning in? You know, doing that wide turn to, uh, deliver fuel to the Murphy's convenience store? And then also those coming in on First Street that are gonna try to make a left turn, that they won't be able to because there's no, uh, signal light or stop signs or. How are you going to address the traffic control at that particular spot intersection?
If I may.
Greg, if, sorry for the interruption, I just wanna point out that those are the exact concerns that the planning and zoning committee just discussed last June when, when they voted unanimously to not recommend because of the massive traffic concerns that you just brought up. So, sorry about that, Greg. Thank you.
Go ahead, Greg.
So with all due respect, I would defer to our legal counsel, Ms. Anna Markowski, if I can discuss anything in regards to, because this is about a replat, correct?
Right.
So do we need to go into discussion in regards about now transferring over about traffic plans and write-ins and write-outs? With all due respect, please.
I think our attorney should have said that, but, uh, she was viewing some documents.
No, um, I think that Ms. Pokret sent a memo specifying that we cannot discuss the traffic issue. That's not what the plat is here for.
But I do understand your concerns. I, I understand the concerns in regards to that, so I couldn't answer your question.
However, Mr. Velazquez, may I continue just one?
Just, remember, don't go into the traffic.
On the plat, uh, so if you, we were to vote yes, our vote indicates that they can continue to move forward with their plats.
Hi, yes, ma'am. So the plat is basically giving them the authority to create these lots. Um, the zoning is what allowed them to move forward with their plans. And so, um, yes, the, the traffic, um, issue, we have, we have heard you and we've heard your, um, concerns, planning and zoning commission's concerns as well, that that is on a separate track for building plan review and site plan review, um, not on the plat itself.
And what is the planning and zoning commission recommendation?
It was for approval.
For this particular one is for approval?
Yes, ma'am, because.
I didn't see it noted on here, that's why.
Just to be clear, you're talking about they voted to recommend approval of the replat?
Of the replat.
Yes.
Yes, sir. The, the replat.
That's what we're discussing right now.
Yes, the, again, the, the replat is just changing the lot sizes and, and configuring, doing the, the road right-of-way. And so that is a, a different item and we have specific state guidance that requires us to look at certain things and if, if it meets all those guidelines, we have to approve it.
Thank you, Ms. Janice.
After all, any more discussion? Did I get a motion?
Yes, I did.
First and a second, right? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item K is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one hundred, a resolution by the Del Rio City Council establishing a policy for the sale of city-owned right-of-way upon abandonment, including fair market value procedures and a discount for retained easements.
Do I have a motion to die?
Yeah, I shall move.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Lopez, do we have any questions for Janice?
Thanks for the hard work.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Seven oh.
Item B is also being pulled, uh, for corrections. So we are on item C, ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-five dash zero three-five, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Del Rio, Texas, amending chapter fourteen by changing the title from health to health and safety and by adding article six, noise and sound level regulations to the city of Del Rio court of ordinances and providing a cumulative and savings clause, providing for severability and declaring an effective date.
Do I have a motion to die?
Uh, before I make a motion?
Councilman Lopez, do I have a second?
No, no, no. Before the motion. I'm not motioning for this. I wanna make a separate motion.
What do you mean you wanna make a separate?
I wanna table C and D.
Do I make a motion?
I wanna make a motion to table C and D.
C and D?
Yes, sir. It's both, it's both related to the ordinances of the loudspeakers and the changing of it and the amending.
Do I have a second to table this?
I don't think there's enough information yet.
Could, could you elaborate on what about it you think needs to be updated, modified, whatever?
One is that, okay, I wasn't here for it. I wasn't here for the meeting and everything. But we just received right now a new, a new, uh, a break on it. And I still feel that residents, those still do not have enough time to understand this. I think we need more time. We're rushing into something again that we don't give citizens enough education and enough information to tell us, we agree, disagree, or. And then to me, even the, even the set fee, the about five hundred dollars, that's a lot of money.
Councilman Lopez, just not, I don't mean to interrupt, but there was a public, sorry.
No, I understand. It was a public.
Meeting and Janice has a presentation to, um, to give to council before y'all vote.
I, I, I understand that.
But did she go ahead with her presentation?
I saw, I saw that, all that online. I did see it. But I still feel that there wasn't enough, uh, citizens there to, to elaborate the, the, still the concerns. I still, one more time, this right now, I just received it. I mean, to review it in a few minutes and I read already what you have here. But I still need more time, but also I want to give more time for citizens to understand it correctly. And even though it's modified or you corrected it, rest of the concerns of your public meeting, I would still have, like to have another one, if possible.
Well, they had a town hall meeting, but before, uh, you made your motion to table it.
Yes, sir.
To postpone it, is there a second on this? If not, we'll go ahead and ask Janice to do her presentation and continue on that. Go ahead, Janice.
Okay, yes, sir. If we could bring up the presentation on the, the noise ordinance, please? Sorry, thank you. Uh, if you could bring up the noise presentation, please? While they're bringing that up, I'll go ahead and start. Uh, what we wanted to do is just give you a briefing and this is basically the briefing that we gave at the public meeting, uh, last week. But it is a little bit expanded where it gives you a little more information about the questions that were asked during the meeting too. Uh, so what we're gonna talk about this evening is why is there an ordinance? Um, the goals of the ordinance, how the ordinance works, construction noise, events and exceptions, and then enforcement and questions received. And then open it up for any questions that you have. I promise it sounds, it does sound like a lot, but I promise it is a short briefing. Um, if you could go to the next, now the next slide after that, please. Thank you. Okay, so why do we have an ordinance? Um, the city has been, has seen rising, um, complaints on noise, uh, late night parties, music, animals, gatherings. Uh, the current tools that we have, the, the state disorderly conduct, uh, Del Rio municipal code, they're vague. Um, and they're, they've been proven hard to enforce. There is, um, gaps and the staff is reporting gaps and, and how to enforce it. And then also, most Texas cities are having more, um, enforceable in their regulating noise ordinances a little more comprehensively. Uh, this will also consolidate and you'll notice in the agenda, the two, uh, or the three follow-on items that are repealing different ordinances. So this is consolidating those regulations into this one ordinance. The next slide, please? So the goals of this ordinance is to consolidate the regulations, define what reasonable sound is, um, by giving it limits by area and time. And then also provide clear guidance for the police and code enforcement officers that are enforcing it. And then to, of course, promote health, safety, comfort and, and welfare for the community. And this, this slide is just, uh, I, I kinda find it a fun slide cause you get to see the decimal levels and, uh, what they really mean. Um, so when you start to look at what is plainly audible, the, the limits that we have in the enforceable standard, uh, what's in here is the sixty-five decimals, uh, a day and fifty-eight at night and the non-residential at sixty-eight. And so you look that on the side is your chart that is showing you, um, what those levels are. So if you're listening at your headphones, um, just some minutes that, um, you have for the volumes. But, um, if you, just for a frame of reference, loud music and concerts are a hundred and thirty. Uh, so, um, and then you'll look at street traffic is between that eighty and ninety. Um, what's not on here is vacuum cleaners are about seventy-five to give that a little frame of reference. Um, next slide? Construction noise. Right now, there is not a regulation on construction noise, but we have heard some complaints. And it's not a general complaint about construction noise. It is, in certain time of the years, there is some construction that's happening in the middle of neighborhoods. And that happens, you know, sometimes they'll have to pour it five, six o'clock in the morning, um, because of the heat of the day. And so what this does is it does give a general allowance for construction noise, but it, um, also gives a special exception that allows for those times when every once in a while they need to do work because of the heat or the, the coolness of the, the day and them having to get work done. Next one, um, some events and exceptions. So there is exceptions. Uh, we are a town that likes to, um, host events and, uh, we're known, well-known for that. So city permitted, special events, concerts, parades are exempt. Uh, normal school functions such as graduations and sports exams are exempt. Um, daytime property maintenance allowed, so if that's, you're mowing your lawn, you're doing those kind of things, that is also allowed. Religious bells, government work, emergencies are also exempt. Enforcement, um, in that, Councilman Lopez, was something that you were talking about. Uh, the fine is up to. Uh, the fine is up to $500 a day. So that is at the discretion of the judge when it goes forward for municipal court. And it could be every day that the violation exists. So if they have to go back each day, they could get another, um, citation and a, and a fine. And then offers, uh, officers can use reasonable personal standards and, and sound meters or sound meters to look at enforcement. So as you mentioned, we did have a public meeting last week, uh, we had 18 people attend. And then we also had some city council members and the mayor attend as well. Um, some of the questions that we had is, uh, and, and thank you for staff that fielded those questions. I know that Chief, he did a lot of the fielding that evening. Um, but we listed some of the questions that came up during the meeting. Um, does this, this ordinance comply with state standards? And, and yes, it does. Um, how will they be enforced? And it will be prescribed by the, the, the ordinance, but also at the discretion of the officer that's going and enforcing the regulations. Uh, there were concerns raised about the loud noises, uh, for people that had disabilities or, um, special needs and noise sensitivity. And so, yes, this would be a tool that we could use for that. Um, how were the sound levels established? The sound levels are a little different than what they were before, um, one of the, the community members noted. And, um, what was said is this was based off of best practices. And then also, um, case law that had come up and was researched by our city attorney. And then concerns about neighbors, targeting other neighbors, that was also a concern that was brought up. And, um, the police officers will ensure that enforcement in, considers these kind of instances so that it won't be a tool to use in, um, those kind of instances where we're just fighting with our neighbors. And then, um, finally, some of the last questions that we had on social media and that came in to city staff was, is band practice allowed at home? Um, yes, if it's during, during the daytime hours and doesn't violate the decimal levels. Um, and then what if a neighbor calls the police during graduation ceremonies? Well, um, that is an special exempt, um, special event. And, um, if it's at a reasonable hour and during the reasonable times, they'll use their discretion. And then are school-related events regulated? No, they are not. And then, um, that was actually, again, my last slide. So, um, if you do have any questions, uh, as staff, we're here to answer anything that you have.
Uh, Janus, uh, um, we got the construction noise, you're allowing Monday through Saturday from seven to eight, what about residential? What are the time zones that, that they can have? Whatever behind, on the backyards in front or whatever, music, full blast, to what time?
That would be your, your levels, um, your normal levels that are in the ordinance, um, those are.
Ms. Pokret, would that be your nighttime hours?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, defined as the hours between 10:01 PM on one day and 7:59 AM the following day? The concern I had was I thought 10:01 PM is too early. Especially if you're coming back from graduation, gonna start having your evening barbecue. I thought, I don't know, uh, what other people think, maybe midnight to 7:59 AM or something like that? Or, I don't know, but I think 10 o'clock is too early, 10:01.
Uh, that's every day or?
Yes, that's every day.
Okay.
That's just part of the ordinance, but again, it goes back to the officer's discretion. If they were to go to your home and you had, were having a graduation celebration, they would take into account. They're looking at a reasonable person's standard. So is it reasonable for somebody to have a graduation party and make noise? It is, so that's what they're going to look at. Now, of course, if you're excessive noise, you know, you have a live band, whatever, then, then they will cite you.
Right, and, and, and a lot of parties start late in the evening because, uh, you know, birthday celebrations, whatever, you want to have a carne asada, you know, we're in Del Rio, Texas, you know, you want to have a carne asada and some mariachis and 10 o'clock, it's just getting going, you know? So, uh, I'm concerned about 10 o'clock.
Uh, uh, Chief, do you want to respond to that or?
Good evening, counsel, mayor. Uh, think of it, think of it this way, what we're looking at is not the party. You can party whenever you want, but when it gets to the point, it doesn't matter what time it is. If it's too loud and it's disturbing the neighbors, it's disturbing the neighborhood, then we need to go address it. We need to tell them to, to turn it down. And if they turn it down, there's no problem. We'll just say, turn it down, it's, it's too, too loud, turn the music down to five instead of 10. If we have to come back and the neighbors continue to call, because we don't know their situation, they might have special needs children, elderly, they sleep, it, it's not fair to them over a party. You can have a party without having the music on dial 10. So i- it's just a noise violation. If they're too loud, they're too loud. It doesn't matter if they're having a party or they're back there building or they're, you know, just screaming for no reason, too loud is too loud. And that's what we're going to address, we're not going to worry about anything else.
Thank you, Chief, uh, you did an amazing job that evening, both of y'all did, at the public meeting. And that's the reason I asked also, because you made it very clear, for those that did not attend, that a, a lot of this is going to be at the officer's discretion. You're not just going to throw the book at them because it's written down.
You had it.
You take into consideration what type of noise it is, what type of time it is, and, and if there's any circumstances, situations such as special needs, elderly, or anything like that. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the, uh, concerns, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Lopez.
Uh, who's going to measure the DCB, the DBAs? Are you going to?
So you don't have to measure, you can do if it's just unreasonably loud, but we can measure also, depending on what it is.
Because certain houses, certain houses, certain walls, private phone fences, whatever, their echoes are going to go higher than just an open, open area. When it's an open area, I'm pretty sure they will control when it's closed, like brick walls. Well, naturally, you're not going to, they don't know any difference between how loud it is and, you know, and that's understandable. But, uh, but what I'm reading here also is that citizens got to get permit. They have to get permits to, to be having parties at certain hours in daylight or, or nighttime.
For events, correct?
It, it's, it's on here.
No, it shouldn't be for parties, it'd just be for special event. You can, you can have a party, you don't need a permit for that.
Just special event.
Yeah, like a, like something the city has or, or something maybe a church would have or something like that.
Well, that's what I mean, we still need to, we still got to study it a little bit more. You know, we're just throwing something, chapter 14 or, chapter 14 already established most of it. We can modify it, but you're throwing a lot more in here that I'm seeing, that I'm reading, and I'm comparing it even to San Antonio, to other cities. And this is not San Antonio, this is Del Rio, like Ms. Carmen says, people like to party. Now we're going to tell them when to party, when not to party, what time to do it, when not time not to do it. And, and I'm pretty sure if you know your neighbors, I'm pretty sure they know not to do it or not to do it, or they're going to just nuisance a neighbor because they know how they are. I understand that. But, uh, I think we still need to review it some more, I assume that 18 people is not the whole town.
And, and for people that know their neighbors, like you're saying, this is not the problem because they can go to their neighbor and say, turn it down. This is for the people who has neighbors that don't care and they're going to blast it anyway. So what the decimal meters are for, so if I go to somebody's house and I say, it's too loud, I'm sitting there going, doesn't sound that loud to me, and they're like, it's too loud, trust me. Let me pull it out and go, hit it. The law says it's not, or the law says it does, that's what we use it for. Other than that, you can tell if it's too loud. You go in there and their mayor's rattling inside their house, there's a problem with it. So this isn't just for, don't think this is for parties or just everyday people. These are for the people that you want to get a ticket. Trust me, it's going to be the ones that your four houses down and you're boom, 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 you know, or whatever they're doing, this is for those people. This isn't for everybody else. Police are not going down the street, listening and say, hey, I heard music, we can write a ticket. It, this is going to be an absolute, people that are violating the law. And just keep that in mind, this is, it looks fancy and like there's a lot, we're, we're 15, 15 years behind everybody else. These laws, this, this city ordinance, everybody has.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, this is very, very common, this thing's been written 7,000 times. All this language is just really standard, it's been poured over, over and over for years. I, I don't want you to think we're trying to develop something that no one's seen. This, this is, this is nothing, it, it's all very, very standard. Uh, I've dealt with, uh, ordinance just like this, we, last place I worked was almost 20 years ago. So I've dealt with every variation of it through all different ranks and I'm telling you, this is, it's not a big deal. It, it's just for the people that are in their vehicles and they're just blowing that music up, they're at somebody's house and we go by and they say, we're going to turn it down. As soon as we drive away, they crank it back up to 20 now to get the rest of the neighborhood mad because they got called on. Now we can do something about it, we can stop those people, you know? You got mothers and family that are there, they don't need to listen to this. And it's for hardheads and, and that's the best way to say it. I mean, it's not going to be for regular folks that are having a party.
Well, even at HEB, just getting out, here comes this truck with doom, doom, Mexican music, loud like, everybody likes to hear what he likes.
And that's why.
And, 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 but it's hard to catch them.
Yeah.
Thing is, they call them and you're not going to get to catch them, they're probably already gone home or go somewhere else.
That's going to be mostly when we come upon it. That's where we get with the sound ordinance for the vehicles. When we're there, we hear it, we will pinpoint who it is and we can stop them. And what we'll do, if a person gets enough tickets, they stop it. Right now, we can shake our finger and make a face at them and nothing's going to happen. When you start giving them tickets, then they stop that mess and then it slows it all down and we don't have to listen to it and that's for everybody.
If it is for the base, for the music, based on automobiles, I would go ahead and, and approve it and let it go because that is true. I have had windows in my house, like, home, they want to break, you know, it's just basic so stupid.
And the mufflers.
And I hear the mufflers even on Gibbs racing, they're racing down Gibbs coming from the bridge or whatever, the light, they take off, I hear them. So it's kind of hard to catch them, but they are out there and we hear it. I mean, on automobiles, I'll, I'll go ahead and approve to get those right now. As far as for having parties, you know, telling people when, and neighbors calling them in, I do like a little bit of enforcement, a little bit of control. But let's just be reasonable and let the citizens know. I mean, they're not going to know any difference about DBAs, they don't know how to do the decimals because that's, y'all got to put, download on your app and find out if it's too loud or not by law or by ordinance, that's all you're going to do it. Citizens may not know that.
And, and for the first.
But I agree on the vehicles for right now.
Okay.
Yeah, and for about the first six months, keep in mind, everybody's going to get a warning. Everybody's going to always get a warning. We're not going to go and just write a ticket unless it's habitual, unless it's happens every time we go over there, they've been warned over and over. So when we write a citation, we write a warning, it's going to go into our database, we'll look it up and I'll look, Mr. Lopez, okay, you've been told four times already, you know what you're doing, you're still choosing to do it. So you'll get a ticket every single time after that until you stop, as simple as that. But you're going to get lots of chances on it, it just, be, because exactly what you said, this is new and we'll explain it to them, we'll complain, you're warned, you'll claim the violation and say, okay, 90% of the people are going to say, oh, I didn't know, no problem, we'll cut it off. It's the 10% we worry about.
As long as we. Yeah, as long as we educate the citizens.
We will, sir.
But I need, but I need to see some kind of a fine chart, you know, because I'm pretty sure they want to know, because $500, I know the judge is going to set the fine, that's fine, but.
Uh, it, it's going to be put on 830 times on all of you. For right now, uh, Councilman JP, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Chief, uh, being in the construction field, there are times that we have to pour two, three o'clock in the morning. Uh, we have a five, 600 yard pour and, uh, these concrete trucks come in with 10 yards at a time and you have, uh, backup, uh, bells that are actually loud because they're warning the people around that something's backing up. And then you also have pump trucks that are, uh, they're pumping concrete, uh, to the job site, you know? These things don't happen every day, but there is a time that they do happen. We're going to have to be lenient about that because we have to start a pour two, three o'clock in the morning. Uh, and some of these schools that we work at are in neighborhood schools. So you're going to be getting some calls, you know, uh, because of the noise that happens, but this is the, the reality of the beast.
So you can get a permit for that, am I correct, for the?
You can get a waiver.
Can get a waiver.
So if you're permitted and it's, there's going to be certain times that you do it, we're, we're not going to deal with any of this unless we start getting calls from people. And it's just like anything else, if the concrete trucks are making too much noise to keep people up at three in the morning, then we're going to ask them to stop, and you know, but.
You can't stop a pour.
Well, or they shouldn't do it at three o'clock in the morning, if, if, yeah, you know what I'm saying?
A concrete pour, you cannot stop it. It's a monolithic pour and, and it's designed to do what it's supposed to do. This is why I'm saying, we have to be reasonable about it. This doesn't happen every day, but there are days that it does happen and we have to be reasonable about it.
How long do they usually take, roughly?
Excuse me?
How long do the pour usually take, just a rough estimate?
Uh, it'll, it'll take eight, eight hours. That's why you start at two o'clock in the morning because you don't just pour, then you have to work it and, and, uh, finish it, you know, so it takes, it'll take, a pour will last 12 to 14 hours.
Uh, on commercial vehicles, I don't think there is that, it's more on music.
There's noise.
All the other stuff.
Well, there's.
Well, Councilman is right, there, there is that section in there and, um, what we did is there is an exception where you can get a special permit to do so. And then we can, the idea is, is that we can let the neighbors know, you know, hey, there's going to be a big pour over by this, this school, uh, if, for the example.
Now, is there going to be another cost added to that permit? I mean, we're already paying 60, $75,000 for a building permit, you know, and, and, in that building permit, you already know that we're going to be pouring, uh, a large pour, you know? And now to hit me up with, with another permit fee, you know, I, I, I think that's, that's kind of unreasonable.
No, sir, that we weren't planning on doing a fee for that.
Would, would that permit have to go to them or to the chief?
The chief.
The chief, right?
Everything goes to the chief, according to the book.
It's with the building, the building official and they can give that, that exception, the permit for that. And so typically we'll know because you'll do your forms. And so they'll be able to say, yes, we know that this is coming up and, at time of year, when, whenever you're going to be starting, because I know that some houses have started really early when it's 120 outside, you have to start early. And so this is, there's, there's just these, these special permits.
Just to let the chief know that this is a possibility of happening, you know? Uh, uh, and, 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 uh, the engineers, the state engineers, they require us to do what we need to do.
And we would do with the neighborhoods too, and if they did complain on something like that, because that's not, that's construction, that's not malicious, that's not somebody doing this on purpose. We try to explain it to them. And, and I understand when a pour starts, it can't stop. Uh, with the, if you get the proper permits and you do what it is, it's all going to probably be done ahead of time. I'm saying, worst case scenario, we're going to work as much as we can.
We just want to be, uh, uh, on the same page, that's all. You know what I'm saying? That's all.
Yeah, and not going to go over there immediately.
I want to do this every day because I, I wouldn't want to do that every day.
Right.
But it happens, it happens, you know?
Councilman Canyan? Uh, yes, Chief, uh, just out of curiosity, how many of these calls do you think we get now on a week or weekend or?
Uh, let me see, uh, I, I'm just going to, I have no idea as far as how many calls, I know that it's an issue. I would say maybe it's, it's the weekend more than anything, but maybe, you know, 10 to 15 roughly, something like that, a weekend, that are noise related. Uh, not to mention, because we don't have this, people don't call for the loud music. As far as the vehicles and stuff, they've just think that's just the way, you know, you got to just live with it. Uh, as far as the houses, 10 to 15 would be a good guess, roughly is what we deal with. And it's going to be, some, some of it is, uh, the noise violation and that it goes away, it truly goes away. And by the time we get out there, well, we haven't heard it in about 20 minutes and, you know, it, it's just that simple. Okay, if you hear it again, let us know. But then sometimes it's the ones that we go out there, they turn the music down, we talk to them and then they come back again and they just turn it back up and they do this back and forth all day. Now this will give us something to, to help with that. But, uh, it, it's an issue all the way around, you know, because the ordinance covers multiple things and a big ball of it, it's, uh, it's something that we get a lot of complaints about. And just, uh, the mufflers and stuff, it's partially, some of our elderly have mentioned that when they, they take off at the, at the red lights and, you know, even if they're going faster, not the muffler sounds horrible, that it hurts them, you know, that they, they fell down before or they run in, it just startles them, it startles me, you know, those things are loud if you're right there. So those are the kind of complaints we get a lot of. Not, not, the houses are kind of, it's really not a whole lot with there, it's just certain houses that keep doing it. It's a lot of it is the, the motor vehicles, that's a lot of what we get.
So, uh, is a city, is a city exempt from this from making noises when the midnight crew has to go out there and fix water, water lines, there's leaks that they're over there digging with the back holes and backing up trucks? I mean, are the city going to be exempt from that, from working late night levels hours?
Any emergency situation should be exempt from it.
Because all city trucks have those loud beep, beep, getting back.
Yeah, that, that'll supersede, yeah, that's going to supersede, uh, the noise ordinance if, if the pipes busted or gas line or something like that, same thing with us, lights and sirens or anything that we're doing, those are going to supersede the noise ordinance. Same thing with us, lights and sirens or anything that we're doing, those are going to supersede the noise ordinance. This is just for malicious noise, not just every noise.
I know it's in here, certifying was exempt, was accepted, you know, what, you know, what the ordinance I'm reading. But I still need a little bit more, probably make it more standard and reasonable and easier to understand it between the speakers, amplifiers, mufflers, construction, and exceptions of emergency, construction of, like Mr. Councilman Sanchez and city, because the city does a lot of repairs, you know, a lot of waters bust, and they're out there. I've seen them. And even at seven o'clock in the morning when they go work, like when they clean the, I guess, the sewer lines, big old vacuum truck, he's out there early in the morning. You know, that's another one. So like I said, there are exceptions, fine, but I would agree on the loud speakers and the loud mufflers. You know, that'd be amended to, to put in there, you know, with exceptions. But to simplify, this is confusing a little bit. There's a lot of law and lawyer language on there that I'm like, just make it simple.
Yeah, and a lot of it's in the transportation code too, like the mufflers and the cutting up, that's already there. Those are things that we're working with too. It just makes it, it just, it just makes it in one place so that everybody can see it also in the transportation, in the city ordinance.
Because I don't think, is chapter fourteen only in here?
I got a, can I?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I got a, we talked about everything. You said you're going to give them a warning, right? Now, the change of the guard, which is the officers, is the first warning, I don't know, the law might kind of give us a heads up on this. The first warning would be a written warning, and the second one is the same thing with a ticket. Because I can tell you, some of us out there are going to say, hey, I never got a warning, so now I'm going to go fight it wherever I'm going to go fight this ticket. So are we going to give them one is a warning and the second one is a ticket? Or we're going to just go out verbally and say, you never told me?
We're leaving that up to the officer's discretion. If it's really egregious, a lot of noise, they probably don't need to give a warning, but they're giving a warning as a courtesy.
Fighting writing or verbal?
It's not required.
Not required by law. So I don't, if I go to a municipal court where I have to go pay my tickets that I've never got a warning.
Yeah, it's okay. You don't have to get a warning, but you have to have faith, you have to.
Dispatch may have it in their records?
Yeah, this is a courtesy, and we don't, we don't have to do any of this. We're going to do this, especially at the beginning, to get everybody just acclimated to, to understand it. But as far as keeping a record of it, so what we have, we use the Brazos Ticket Riders, the digital ticket rider. So we can put a warning in there on the first person, and then go two shifts down, and then they can look that name back up again and say, I never got a warning, first time I ever heard anything about this law. Look over there, well, you just got one yesterday for loud music, and you're playing it again, and, oh, you caught me. And then from there, we can write our citation if we need to. It's, for somebody who's trying to violate it on purpose, now let's say there's a party and there's kids out there, and they're getting real loud, they're, you know, they call us out there. Well, we go out there again, and it's kids, and the parents are trying to calm them down, and they're getting super loud again. Well, it doesn't mean they get a ticket automatically on the second one. It's okay, this is the second time now. I realize these are children, you're working on it. Well, do some, do better, you know, get them down. You're still getting a lot of complaints on there. And then maybe in that one, the third one, because it's something, it's an unknown, you know, children you can't deal with. It's different from somebody going out there and purposely cranking that music up, and then you go tell an adult, turn your music down, you're disturbing everybody, and they choose to not do it. That's where you get on the second one. Okay, you made a choice. This is not kids that are all independent that you're trying to calm down, what parents are trying to do. This is somebody making a choice to defy us and to go ahead and just disturb the rest of the community. Those are the people that are going to get one warning or not even one, depending on what they're doing. But we're going to try to use a lot of common sense, and we're not trying to, everybody's going to get their fair shot. They shouldn't come up and say that, you know, they just gave us a ticket for no reason. There's going to be a history of them getting the warnings and understanding this and being explained. And if they choose to do it, well, it's on them.
Okay. Any other questions? Is not all entertain a motion?
Well, I made a motion for her, so. I made a motion to table it.
And there's no sec?
I'm sorry, we can't take from the, from the audience?
No.
No, ma'am.
Do I have a second on his motion to table? No, if not, only entertain a second motion.
I'm to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero three five.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Councilman DeRusse, do I have any other questions concerned? If not, all in favor, I abstain. Two against?
Two against.
Forget it.
Thank you.
Next item.
Okay, the next item is resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three six, in ordinance of the City of Dorio, Texas, amending chapter sixteen, licenses and business regulations by repealing and deleting article four, loudspeakers from the City of Dorio Code of Ordinances, providing a cumulative and savings clause, providing for severability, and declaring an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
I'm to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three six.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Martinez, we already discussed it. If you want to further discuss it or have any comments, if not, all in favor, I abstain, against?
Against.
Against.
The next item is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three seven, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dorio, Texas, amending chapter seventeen, motor vehicle and traffic by repealing and deleting article three, mufflers, unnecessary noise from the City of Dorio Code of Ordinances, providing a cumulative and savings clause, providing for severability, and declaring an effective date.
Do I have a motion to die?
I still move.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman DeRusse, do we have any comments, concerns? If not, all in favor, I. Seven oh.
The mufflers, okay.
Okay, the next item is twelve, executive session. The council will reconvene into regular session upon conclusion of the executive session, and may recall any item posted for executive session for action as necessary. Item twelve A is executive session on matters covered by section five five one point zero seven one parentheses one parentheses A of chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with city attorney regarding contemplated litigation, Paymo Group LLC, DBA the Goodbar. And item B is executive session on matters covered by section five five one point zero seven four parentheses one, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee interviews and possible appointment of potential economic development board members. Place one, term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Place two, term expired, expires December, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And place four, unexpired term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
It's eight fifty-nine. This council will go into executive session.
Exactly one hour.
I can call.
I'll recess at eight fifty-nine.
I read your letter. You want to make a difference? Tell your movie to go to the Senate five hundred million dollars.
I'm interested in that.
And we'll put his name on the floor there.
We'll put his portrait.
It's ten o'clock and this council have reconvened from executive session and there was no action. It's ten o'clock and this meeting is adjourned.